Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours. We are live and we are broadcasting.
Thank you, Ed. I'd like to call to order the Coventry Planning Commission Wednesday, April 28th, 2021 meeting, and it is now 6:32. All right, I'll get a determination of quorum. Mr. Reyes?
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny?
Sure.
Mr. Poselli?
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Mattson?
Present.
Secretary Lukowitz?
Here.
Vice Chairman Clooney?
Yeah.
And Chairman Flynn is all here, and Mr. Ozinkowski is excused tonight. Okay, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, Kyle. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
To the republic.
Public.
Which is.
Stand.
One nation.
On the good. Invisible.
Invisible. With liberty and justice.
For.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of minutes, 4.1, March 24th, 2021 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Mattson.
Second by Mr. Kenny.
I have a second by Mr. Kenny. Any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Poselli?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Hearing no corrections. Aye.
Mr. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, we have a recommendation to zoning, border review for Balcom, 10 acres. Is is anybody here for that applicant?
I don't see him, sir. Let's just skip him, and we'll come, we'll come back if he comes back on.
Okay, we'll move on to number six. That's a recommendation to the town council for FY 2021, 2022 capital improvement program. Anybody from the board have any questions? I think our task in this is just to make sure it fits the comp plan. I think the town council would distribute the funds as as they feel necessary. Anybody have any questions on the capital improvement plan? All right, hearing then, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for a recommendation to the town council.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kenny. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Lukowitz, I have a second from her. Okay, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Poselli?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, on the new business and discussion, handle action, it's a pro proposed phasing plan for the Oaks at East Shore. Applicant, Tylo Land Company LLC, owner's Richard W. Boglin, E.T.A.L.S., and Richard W. N. Herman Boglin, C.O., and also Colleen A. Carlson. It's a preliminary plan approved major land development of 33 lot residential subdivision, and they are again proposing a phasing plan. It's AP 23 lots 47 and 47.001, and AP 32 lot 152, and zone R20, address Tylo Avenue. Anybody here representing the applicant?
I am, Mr. Chairman, Robert DeBois.
Hi, Mr. DeBois.
How are you tonight?
Can you just give a brief summary? We've done a lot of these phases. It looks like you want four phases on this plan.
Uh, it's it's, yeah, it's really three phases, uh, but we've got a 3A and 3B, which could technically be separate, but I don't think that's what the way it's gonna be. So, the first phase has 10 lots, phase two has 13 lots, and the combined phase threes have 10 lots. One of them, I believe, is seven, and one of them is three. It's basically the two cul-de-sacs. We're gonna, we're gonna use those areas for staging areas, which is, which is why we separated. But, but again, we'll probably do them together.
Okay, Bob, anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. DeBois? Okay, I'd entertain a motion for the zoning plan, the phasing plan, I should say.
Mr. Kenny, I'll make a favorable motion for approval for a phasing plan for single-family residents, uh, 33 lot major subdivision, AP 23, lots 47 and 47.001, and AP 32 lot 152, zoned R20. The applicant is proposing to phase the 33 lot residential subdivision at the four phases, uh, phase one, phase two, 3A and 3B. And I recommend, uh, also including the planning director's report in my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattson. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Poselli?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn says aye, and motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bob.
Have a great night. We're all, I can, I can log off, I take it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Ron, can I have a minute?
Yes.
Uh, could you at this time announce, or or I could do it, I just want to make an announcement that Red Brook Meadow is being continued until May 26th? For those here in attendance, uh, there was a preliminary plan application for the Woods at Red Brook Phase Three. Uh, that is not going to be heard this evening, and it'll be postponed till May 26th, 2021 meeting. I just wanted to let, in case anybody in the audience was here for that application, it's gonna be continued until May 26th. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Crossman. Okay, next on the agenda, 7.2, it's a pre-application plan for Black Rock Ridge. Owner, Gervasio Family Real Estate LLC, CEO Thomas Gervasio. Applicant saying proposal, three lot minus subdivision, AP 79 lot 94, zoned R20, and the address is 401 Black Rock Road. So, anybody here representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, for the applicant and owning, owner, really bringing the fireworks here tonight, Mr. Chairman. I had to concentrate hard to figure out what I could add after your introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
The, uh, proposal is to, uh, divide a 3.78 acre lot in the R20 zone at AP 79 lot 94 into three conforming lots. The existing home presently on the lot will be, uh, removed, and the, uh, lots will be split into three lots. The northernmost lot, 70,000 square feet, a center lot, just over an acre at 46,000 square feet, and a southern lot of 48,000 square feet. Single-family home to be constructed on each lot with driveway, access, and frontage on Black Rock Road. Public water, OWTS, uh, all is proposed to be a single-family home. The, uh, characteristics of the lot, which are unique, are a wetland of substantial size, 33,000 square feet on the northern, uh, portion of the lot, and that is why that first lot that I mentioned is, uh, larger than the other two. And on the southern edge of the property, there's a, uh, utility easement diagonally cutting across the, uh, corner of the lot, which will have to be dealt with, uh, in regard to the access to that southern lot. Otherwise, conforming to R20, uh, setbacks, frontage, area of construction, um, fits with the area, which is also mainly single-family homes. Uh, we're pre-application right now, so I'm open to any, uh, comments from the board. Otherwise, we'll proceed to, uh, ZEM, and then, uh, Coventry Fire and Kent County Water, and appear back before this board for preliminary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Just before I ask, uh, any questions from the board, I just want to make sure, anybody that wants to go over and look at that, we do not do sidewalks anymore because of the, uh, COVID restrictions. So, um, I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions for Mr. Cronin.
I, I have, I have two questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Clooney.
I, I realize that electric easement probably dates back to the early 1900s, if not sooner. I don't know. So, you're gonna get confirmation from the utility company as it relates to the driveway and the proximity?
That, that's correct.
Because I've dealt with them on a couple of projects, and sometimes, I mean, they're, they, they even get nervous about the equipment that's actually gonna be on the site working. Those, those wires are up pretty high. And again, just, it's just a general observation. I don't know if it, if it's of concern. I know the driveway to that third house was, was the item that the, um, town engineer brought up, but the dwelling in the middle, um, I can see where they set the one on the right back considerably to, to, you know, stay a decent distance away from the actual easement boundary, but the one in the middle still seems a little close. So, if it's not gonna provide, it's not gonna present a problem for them, you know, I realize the slope, there's quite a slope there. They might want to consider just setting that middle dwelling back just a little bit further.
Thank you, Mr. Clooney.
Anybody else on the board?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Cronin, I don't, I don't see anybody. I think you're all set.
Thank you. I'd like to say, uh, thank you and adios to Mr. Poselli.
Yes.
It's been a pleasure, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I thanked the board.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, that was quick.
Yeah.
Okay, next, next we have a public informational meeting for master plan. Uh, it's a proposed major land development residential cluster. It was originally, uh, a solar project. It is now a residential cluster. The planned phase is master plan subdivision. The owner's a Carbon Town Realty LLC. The applicant is Revity Energy LLC. The address is Carbon Town Road. It's AP 85 lots one and 5.3 zone RR2, lot size 45.2 acres of vacant land, and they are proposing an 18 lot residential subdivision. Is anybody here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm a member of the Coventry Planning Board for the record. Attorney K. Joseph Sakachi, representing the applicant this evening. With me tonight, I have the principals, uh, and I also have an engineer from Dupree, Eric Prevee, as well. I will give the board a brief introduction, and maybe I, uh, turn it over to Eric for any technical questions, but we were here before you previously. Um, I was retained to represent the project after the solar field was denied or by the town with a, um, indication, I would say, from the neighborhood, and the, the board that they would, everybody would prefer to see residential development. We were here, uh, before with an application for over 21 lots, and we were also gonna seek bonus lots. Uh, we had a, uh, pre-app meeting with the board, I think it was a month or two ago, and then, uh, we have continued our engineering, and we have, uh, we, in talking with staff, we have reduced our original request. We are not seeking any bonus lots at all, and we've reduced the number to 18 lots of what we're, uh, proposing for this site. Uh, we're doing it in such a way that creates a lot of open space. Uh, Eric, I don't know if you can put the site plan up on the, on the screen, so everybody from the board and the public can see it. Thank you very much, sir. And it's a typical, uh, cluster development, and as you can see, we've left, uh, a good part of this open space land. The cul-de-sacs and, and the houses are, uh, very much, um, spread out. Uh, there's a lot of space in between them. Uh, we wanted to do that to preserve the, you know, privacy of the neighbors, and you can see the building envelopes are actually, uh, well onto the site and not onto the, any of the neighboring sites. We're not butting up against them, and you can see where the houses are, which are very close to the proposed cul-de-sacs and not, uh, setback near any of the other houses in the area. This is privately owned land. My client has purchased the property over a year ago. Um, he obviously intended to do solar. That was his first preference. He's, Revity Energy is a solar company, but, um, that didn't work out, and the prop, it's privately owns the land, zone residential, and we're looking to do a residential development there, which we think is very much in character with the neighborhood, um, and meets with a comprehensive plan intent in, in the community. Uh, as everyone knows, this is master plan approval. We still need to do a lot more engineering work, detailed work, and we will come back before the board, uh, for preliminary at some later point. That will also be a public hearing as well. I will be happy to answer any questions, uh, and as well as, uh, Mr. Prevee from Dupree, uh, will know a lot more of the engineering details, but it's a very, um, simple plan. It's a basic plan. It's a residential plan. Nothing out of the ordinary. Typical garden varieties, uh, 18 lot subdivision, and as I said earlier, uh, we are not asking for any bonus lots, and we've reduced the number of lots we've asked originally substantially. Be happy to answer any questions, or turn it over to Mr. Prevee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sakachi. Uh, do you have anybody else doing any presentations tonight, or I'll just go right to my board members?
I, I, I would prefer you go to the board and the public, and I will call on the experts that who's available and on there. We have another simultaneous, uh, the client has another meeting going on in another community, but we'll provide if the experts as needed. One of our experts had a family emergency tonight, but you have reports, I believe, from Mr. Pimento in, in there as well. Uh, so, uh, we'll be happy to answer anything, questions as best we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Before I open up public hearing, I'm gonna, uh, ask the commission if they, if anybody on the commission has any, uh, questions for Mr. Sakachi?
Ron?
Yes.
So, so we're not gonna get, um, any type of engineering, uh, in, you know, detail at this point, because?
I can provide Mr. Prevee, and he can answer any questions you have, Mr. Clooney.
Okay. That's fine. The, the, these, these are kind of observations. I, I noticed, um, as you go, go enter the property from Carbon Town Road on the left-hand side, there's a a rather large undeveloped area. If there were reason that that wasn't, um, there's no lot there?
I will defer to Mr. Prevee on that. He was the designer. Are you talking about the area next to lot number two and lot number three?
Yes, the corner. Yes, that's it.
I believe that is drainage, right?
I, I, I believe exactly right. I believe that's.
Okay, yeah, that's right. It doesn't show up on this plan. Okay, and?
I'm sorry, it's, it's Heather, the stenographer. I'm sorry. Could we just take the plan down or maybe move to the side? I can't see who's speaking. Unless they identify themselves, that would be great.
Oh, we can take the map, though.
Well, okay, well, I'd rather have the map up, quite frankly.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll just announce. Whether it's Rick, it's Rick Clooney that answered the que, answered the question, and then I believe, uh, Mr. Sakachi was deferring to Eric to say, is that the area? So, now that I see that that's a detention, that, that, uh, that question's answered. Um, on the earlier plan that was presented, uh, last month, the preliminary plan, there was a comment from the engineer. Is, is it possible, and again, this is just an observation to, um, there's no second means of ingress or egress to this development, which I believe when you've got cul-de-sacs, uh, this long is a requirement. So, we've got this secondary access on the lower part of the, uh, say, south of the, of the proposed entrance, and I just don't know if there's a way, uh, between those two lots, and I'm not suggesting that it be, uh, necessarily public access, but more of an emergency access, uh, should there be an, an event or an incident where a fire apparatus needs to get through. Um, so, I know you may not be familiar with this, Mr. Sakachi, but in town, we have, uh, the South Pond Development, where the, uh, developer, granted, granted an easement, uh, from one of the streets through another property, and I think there's a, uh, a lock gate over there, in case fire apparatus or emergency access needs to be gained, because for some reason, the main access is blocked, and similarly, uh, the Hornbeam, uh, Degreed Farm subdivision has a similar situation where there's a lock, lock gate. So, I just, if you could just maybe, you don't have to ans, answer that question right now, but that's, uh, one concern. And then at the northerly cul-de-sac, and I think this was a comment that was made, uh, at the last, uh, meeting, if there was a way to uh, reserve the town and easement for future roadway connection, in the event the parcel to the north uh, wants to develop a residential subdivision off Carbon Town Road, so there will be then two means of ingress and egress to Carbon Town Road. That would be, we, I can't read lot numbers on that plan, but it looks like, I think, 20, uh, yeah, that's the spot right there, 12 and 13. Yeah. Because I mean, it appears you have ample, ample land.
Yeah, we, we can certainly, uh, we can certainly do that, and we can explore that with the engineering. As you know, Mr. Clooney, this is master plan approval. We can come back with those options, what become, uh, if we're successful tonight before we go for preliminary, but there's certain, and I'm not the engineer, but it certainly looks like it's doable. And if the board wanted to, uh, approve the project with the condition that we engineer it in such a way, uh, we can certainly, um, do that.
Sure, thank you. And then I have one final. I, I know you said the houses are rather close, close to the street, particularly with emphasis on the two at the cul-de-sac, but, um, I would be interested to know, um, are these, are you proposing three or four-bedroom dwellings in here?
I will defer to my client. I believe they're three bedrooms, but I will defer to them.
Great.
I, I'm not sure, so I don't, I, um, uh, I don't know. Eric, do you know?
No, I saw Lindsay.
Lindsay?
Uh, this is Lindsay McGovern, Revity Energy, for the record. Yes, we're proposing three to four-bedroom homes on the lot.
Okay, so, again, I, I'm just referring to some of the things that have happened in town. Um, you know, a three to four-bedroom home, it's great. The family moves in. They've got a couple of kids. Uh, it's only a short 15 years, 16 years, and then next thing you know, they've got three or four cars, and the driveways aren't big enough, and then they end up parked in the street. We haven't gotten into the proposed street with at this point, so, uh, I just wanted to point out, it, it, there are benefits to having the houses close to the street, but similarly, um, I just want to make sure the driveways will accommodate, uh, parking within the lot. Um, as you can see, the street lines that they're proposing, there's about two-thirds of the driveway, uh, on this plan is shown on the private lot, and then the, the, the balance is actually within the town right of way. So, um, it, it's certainly beneficial to be able to park at least, um, three cars on, in the driveway.
That's a very good point, Mr. Clooney. What I can tell you, this is this, at this stage, it's, uh, is, it seems if you look at the lots, there's ample room to widen the driveways, so we could widen the driveways to accommodate, and
Correct.
uh, and you can, if you wanted a ID restriction on the, on this plan, the no off-street parking, we could accommodate that as well.
No, no, that's not necessary. It's just an, it's just an observation, because, uh, in fact, I just had this conversation with somebody else, um, some of those cars don't even move when there's a snow event, irregardless of the parking ban, and it, it, it just creates a problem. So, I realize the benefit in, in what you were trying to accomplish, you keeping the homes away from the abutters. The only abutters are to the south of this, and then there's some up just to the north, so, I, I didn't see the issue with perhaps setting, setting things back a little bit unless there's some environmental challenges. So, again, at this point, it's just a suggestion. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Clooney. And anybody else from the board have any questions before I open up public hearing?
Uh, Chairman?
Hon Anderson?
Go ahead, Glenn.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Oh, thank you. Just to add on, I mean, you know, thank you, Rick. So, then also this, just the, some place to put the snow, right? I've just thrown that out there. I know it's early on. I see these little islands in the cul-de-sac, where you are gonna have to deal with snow, uh, at some point. I know that factored into our previous projects, too, and?
What I would tell you, that's a good point. If you look at that drainage lot, that's kind of centered, so it can, yeah, that whole area, there's more than ample opportunity for us to put snow over there where, if, if it needed, if it needed to be done, or, or the plow over there. Um, there'll be plenty of room, even with the drainage lot. There's plenty of excess space there, and some of these lot, lots are very logical. You, you look at lot 11, there's extra room there. You know, lot 14 has an extra room. All for the cul-de-sac. There's, there's plenty of places to accommodate that. It's a good point.
Yeah, now, that's what I was, you know, again, I don't, I don't know if you can just put it, you know, push the snow on someone's property. I don't know how that works, but you, you, there's a little, uh, space to do that. And again, you'll be pushing. I'm not sure you, someone's gonna be bucket loading snow, so I, that, yeah, thanks for answering that. And then the other thing I have, and I'm just trying to learn this stuff, on the fiscal, the impact study, you know, uh, you know, 18 houses, and it's just, you know, total of, is that, am I right to say 47 people? Is that, is that what that number represents? Uh, page five on the impact study, you know, 18, 2.6 people per unit? Is, is that what that represents, and only 47 people? That? I guess I'm, I'm getting, that just seems low to me, you know, a three to four-bedroom house, you're talking, you know, at some point, only one person will buy, and I know, I know, I'm looking at how you determined it. I'm just curious on how they determine it. They, you went to Charahoe School System, and you went to Richmond, and I think, what is it, Oak Valley, Hopkinton? Something like, uh, when we do these studies, how, how come we don't hit closer to home? Like, with all these developments that we have in Coventry, I mean, we're just booming. People are scooping them up. And, uh, why don't we just, why don't we compare to a, a recent development in Coventry that? Why do we go out of, why do we go out of town? Because, you know, I mean, Charahoe's great and Richmond, but I know people flock in the Coventry, and these, these numbers, you know, could be skewed. You know, I'm not splitting hairs here, but, you know, the, I think they'll be higher. And I just don't why we don't get that.
That's a good point. Unfortunately, our fiscal, I mean, expert, Joe Lombardo, uh, was the one who had the family emergency I mentioned earlier, so he's not here, and I don't want to, uh, try to pretend to be a fiscal expert and talk about his mythology. Um, uh, we will provide that at the next hearing, and I can provide Mr. Lombardo to testify, answer those questions for you. It's not a requirement to have at this level, but we wanted to provide it. We were hoping to have Joe. We got the email after 5 o'clock today. He had a family emergency and couldn't be on the hearing, but, uh?
Thanks. I was just curious why we don't stay in town with all our recent developments?
That's a legitimate question. That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, but I will tell you, Mr. Lombardo was a very well-respected expert. I've used him throughout the, um, state, and I will let him, uh, discuss and, you know, justify his report on why and how he did it. I don't know if he took those numbers and then, uh, adjusted them for Coventry. I don't know the mythology. And I'd answer the same way if someone tried to discuss a traffic study with me. I, I don't know how they do it. I, I, I pick qualified people to be on the, uh, development team who I've used in the past, who've had good results with, so, uh, I'm sorry he's not here for this. Uh, his report's here, and he will be available at the next hearing to answer those questions, and I'll even try to provide those answers to you or to Mr. Crossman in a day or two, uh, when, when Mr. Lombardo becomes available.
Uh, thank, thank you very much. I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Glenn. Mr. Kenny?
Yeah, I just have, uh, one question. Going through here, I see that, um, you guys aren't planning to put any sidewalks in. Um, that's kind of an issue for me, because I, I'd rather not see kids walking in the street. So, I think there should, you guys should look at putting sidewalks in either on both sides or at least one side of the street.
Okay, that, that's fair enough. We'll, we'll be happy to look at that at the next level, but I will tell you that the, the hope here is that we have very, very little traffic, uh, because they're both dead-end streets, and I, but I know you're concerned. There's still cars that go up and down the street, and you want to be protective of children. That's an audible, you know, very laudable goal.
I'm looking at kids walking, you know, walking to a centralized bus stop and, and things like that, you know?
Would you be okay with, uh, a sidewalk on one side, and as long as the sidewalk was like a, a Cape Cod berm? Would that be acceptable to you, Mr. Kenny?
Um, I, I, I'd kind of like to see a traditional sidewalk, sidewalk on one side.
Okay.
I, I may interject.
Mr. Kenny, if I can jump in, our, uh, planners' directors' report, our staff, um, actually suggests that we should have at least one sidewalk, a sidewalk at least on one side. So, that is a recommendation from our staff.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the, uh, the applicants aware of that as well, that we're leaning that way.
I agree.
Anybody else? Are you done, Mr. Kenny?
I am. I believe somebody else was trying to talk, um?
It's hard with the map up.
Mr. Reyes, Mr. Reyes wants to talk.
Mr. Reyes, go ahead.
Yes, um, on the plowing situation, um, I would take out, in the cul-de-sacs, I would move back all three um, houses in the cul-de-sacs, because in the cul-de-sacs, you have to push snow up on their, their lawn. The, you, you share, you split it in between, that, that's, that's, that thing in the middle, that kills the snowplow. You're not, you're not gonna be able to move it around, and it's gonna be a disaster. Days you come out, leave a solid cul-de-sac, and you push it to the Days you come out, leave a solid cul-de-sac, and you push it to the front, to the right, to the left, that's how you spread out snow. You can't just push it down to this open area because you push snow. It shoots off to the side. So I would open up, like Mr. Kenny, sidewalk at least on one side, open the roads up a little more. And take those out for the snow, and then plows trucks can get in there. I've been doing this since I was, uh, nineteen, so. That, that's, that's, um, some problems area right there.
Thank you. We can push those houses back. As you can see, all three, uh, houses on both. The cul-de-sacs, there's ample room to move the houses back, and we're still well within the building envelope.
Yeah, you, because it's, that's the only way you can push the snow. You're gonna push it in the front of one house, to the side, to the other house, to the side. You want to share it. And take those, uh, islands out of there. They're no good. That's not good for you.
I agree, Mr. Reyes. I don't like the islands for the same reason, and they never get maintained. If you went through Ginger Trail. All the curbs are busted up from the plows. Um, they don't work out well. They look nice on a plan, but they just, they don't work in reality. But thank you for that question, Mr. Reyes.
Not a problem.
Mr. Flynn, that's what I wanted to comment on. The Public Works Director is not a fan of those islands, and he's gonna recommend that those islands come out.
You know, no one has to recommend. We will remove them.
Yeah, the, the last few projects, we haven't put those in, Mr. Sakachi, because they've been, they've been a nightmare for the, for the DPW.
Understandable.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Eric Prevy, P R I V as in Victor E., Registered Professional Engineer with Dupree Engineering. Uh, I wanted to comment on the, uh, on the sidewalks real briefly. Uh, we had, during the pre-application, uh, looking at the, uh. Town Consultants Memo as well from Bruce Ackerman, uh, and during the pre-application, it was a recommendation, given the, um. The concerns for stormwater in the area, so we were looking to reduce and minimize as much as possible. So that, that was the main primary purpose. It was supported by the, the consultant engineer. Uh, who said, and I'm just looking at the memo from February ninth, two thousand, uh, eleven. It says, in an effort to. Minimizes the creation of new impervious surfaces in this flood, flood-prone watershed. Town Engineers Office supports the applicant's request for a waiver from the sidewalks, so. Uh, I, I just wanted to put that on the record as well, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well taken. Anybody else from the board have any questions?
I just, I have a question, um, Ron.
Mr. Clooney, go ahead.
Just so we're all clear, there, there are no other waivers at this stage other than from the checklist. In other words, it's the next phase that we will see anything to deal with.
Correct.
For example, roadway widths or any of the other required, uh, items that really aren't shown on the plan at this point. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I had a, I had a, before I open up public hearing, uh. I had a couple of concerned neighbors call, and, uh, Mr. Sakachi, one of, one of the main things was. The conflicting impact study, I guess, when you read the impact study from the, the solar. And you read the impact study from the residential, um, you know, it's totally different as far as the impact to the town. Um, so I know that's, that's gonna be one of the questions. The other one is the buffer. Um, where the residential housing is on the northern, the northern parcel. And I would say the eastern parcel going down Calventown Road and also Watercrest. Um, where the neighboring residents, uh, are concerned about a, um, a proper buffer. So I don't know if, uh, you could put some, uh, maybe green giant arbovites or something in that. Uh, line that could give you some quick buffering. So those are the main calls that I received.
Well, we will, let me, I'll just address them generally, and we'll certainly answer, try our best to answer any questions, but, um. We will provide, uh, the, the expert who prepared the, the studies at the next hearing, and he can answer those questions. This is the first stage of a multi-hearing process. Second of all, it, you know, that's why we push the houses as close to the street as possible. If you look at the map, we've given a lot of natural buffer that's there. I mean, if, if there's a need to supplement that with landscaping. Arbovite or whatever, we'd certainly do that, but, uh, from where the house to house is. It, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Prevy, but there's, there's a substantial number of feet. I, I think it's a hundred if I'm looking at this right with the scale. Um, at least the property lines from where the houses are gonna be. So there's a lot of natural buffer, and we've designed it and developed a way to leave as much buffer as possible.
Yeah, I, I see that. I just wanted to mention the concerns before I opened up public hearing.
Thank you.
Is, uh, is there anybody else on the board have any questions before I open up public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
Motion to open up public hearing.
Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz. Okay, I'll do a, a poll, Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny? Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Boselli?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, public hearing is now open. I'd just like to set a few ground rules. Um, for, for anything repetitious, if, if you hear somebody say something and you agree to it. Just come on, you can certainly come on. I will, everybody that will have an opportunity to speak. Just, um, for, for repetitious and, and time. If, if you just agree with the person, just come on and say, I agree with that person. Um, so, so, um. Other than that, um, anybody will have any opportunity to speak, and that, that is always the case on all our public hearings. So on that note, Mr. Crossman?
Mr. Pre, um, one, one moment, Chairman Flynn. If Mr. Prevy could kill his, uh, screen share.
Yes, I was gonna ask him to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, public hearing is open?
It is, um, yes, but, um. Uh, Mr. Wazika, did you give me share privileges?
I did. Oh, oh, wait a minute.
A co-host to bring people in?
I will do that, sir. I will take.
I would appreciate that very much.
No problem. I will take care of it. There is no one in attendance at this point that has a hand raised to ask a question.
Wow.
I will, I will put, I will, uh, reiterate what Mr. Flynn said. If anyone wants to speak on this, please raise your hand. I will bring you in. Please state your name, spell your name and your address, please. Okay, uh, we do have someone who wants to come in. I'm gonna bring them in.
Thank you, Ed.
Rachel, please state your full name, spell your last name, and also state your address.
Sure, uh, my first name is Rachel. My last name is Montanaro. That's M O N T A N A R O. And I live on twenty-four Watercrest Court. I just had a question about each lot. Is, uh, is each lot going to be completely cleared of trees? Or is there a good portion of the lot that's going to be left, uh, with, with trees and woods?
So, uh, this is Joe Shigachi, and I represent the applicant. We're gonna, uh, leave as many trees as possible. Uh, if, if you look at the footprint, they're very small. We're, we're clear, obviously, the front yard. So that we can build, and we'll leave as many trees as we can in the front yard, and then we'll, uh, clear the backyard a little bit. But there will be a natural buffer. Uh, I would guess that more than fifty percent of those lots. Each individual lot will remain in its, uh, undisturbed vegetative state. Might be as high as sixty or even seventy percent, but I assure you that, uh, my client wants to preserve every tree that's there.
That's great. I, I do really appreciate that. Um, my other question was, is whether, I, and I know this was previously mentioned lightly. But if there could be a buffer between. Uh, Watercrest Court and perhaps the other surrounding neighborhoods. I know that the Oaks has a good buffer. Uh, a good point to mention too is that if these houses are going to be, presumably, a half a million dollars or six hundred thousand dollars. The, the residents who are buying these houses are going to appreciate having as much of a buffer as possible if they're going to spend.
Hundred percent correct. They, people who are spending that kind of money wanna, wanna live in the. Let's face it, Coventry is an extremely desirable area to live, but they want their privacy as well as from the new houses and the older houses. So yes, you're right. It, not only is it, it's good aesthetically, but it's good, it's a good selling point to leave as many trees and, and as big as buffer as possible.
Right, right. So I'm just asking, in addition to, and I, I appreciate that the, the plots aren't going to be completely clear. But in addition to that, it would be nice to have a buffer just as they've done for the Oaks one and two.
So, when we, when we come back for preliminary, we'll have a landscape plan, which we will share with the board and the neighbors. And if, at that time, if the board thinks that we need or, um, um, you know, additional landscaping, we'll be happy to show it. But I will tell you that I think, you know, we probably won't be able to see these houses. I don't know the. And I'll defer to Eric or our landscape people at that time, but thi- this is gonna be hundreds of feet away from anyone else. So if there's a need, we will supplement. We'll put up a buffer. We'll put up some arbovites, some Russian paitrees. Whatever is called for, you know, we, we have a landscape person who picks, uh, trees that will survive the New England climate. As well as, you know, require minimal attention, and we certainly, we, just as you said, we want the people who buy these homes. To have, uh, a certain degree of privacy, and I'm sure the people in neighborhood want a certain degree of privacy. So we're gonna accommodate that because it's the right thing to do, and my client likes to do the right thing, but it's also good business sense.
Right, and I, I do really appreciate that, and I understand where I reside. I, is pretty far away, but I'm just speaking in terms of the entire neighborhood. I won't, won't be, because I live on twenty-four, I won't be able to see these houses. But in terms of the whole neighborhood, it would just, it would just look sharp for everybody. Um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Ed?
If there's anyone else, if there's anyone else that would like to speak on this, please raise your hand. I will bring you into the meeting, state your names, spell your last name, and, uh, give your address. One more time, if there's, oh, we have Kelly Powers. I'm gonna bring her in. Uh, Kelly, allowed to talk. Unfortunately, she has an older version, promote panelists. Okay, Miss. Kelly, please state your name, spell your last name, and give your address, please.
I have to unmute. Kelly, you have to unmute.
She actually, I don't, I don't even see her on screen.
I hear you, Kelly.
Okay, sorry about that, everyone.
That's okay.
Kelly Powers, P O W E R S, eight Watercrest Court. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions. I am not going to hold anyone up. Um, I just wanted to ask about the blasting. Um, I, I, you know, it was a concern with the solar. It's still a concern now. Um, you know. I don't know how far these houses are going to be from our properties lining Watercrest. But I just feel like it's a concern because it is pretty close. You know, as far as blasting goes, we have an area that was a gravel pit, so. There is a large amount of rocks back there.
So it's a very good question, and what I will tell you is that we don't know the answer to that yet, because we're at the very first part of a long process. We'll, we'll do that, but if, if blasting is required, we're gonna do as little as possible because it's very expensive. We will use licensed and bonded Rhode Island companies that stand behind their work, first quality, top-notch people. And, uh, we will do it in such a way that doesn't impact your house, and God forbid, if it did impact your house in any way. We would stand behind it, and we will make sure our, our contractor stands behind it, be fully insured. But my client's the type of person, they would run out and write you a check, and they would deal with the contractor if it became an issue. But, uh, we would file a plan with the, the city and the town, uh, before we even did that. And we would certainly minimize that as much as possible if needed. We don't know if any or how much will be needed. Uh, but we'll do it in a responsible way with responsible people.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, and I appreciate that because it is, you know, like I said, it is a large amount. It, it was a gravel pit, so a rock quarry even, so.
We understand, uh, we're, we're gonna do it in a very responsible way.
I just had one more, actually, two more questions. One is the white pipe back there, is that for septic? Or is that to see how far down the septic's could go, or?
I will, I don't know the answer to that. I'll defer to Eric, but I believe it's some kind of, uh, testing, maybe water table testing. I don't know, and I'll defer to Eric. But typically a water table test.
Correct. Eric Prevy with Dupree Engineering, uh, that's correct. Yeah, we did soil testing. Uh, there was some discussions at the past meeting about, um, the soils and making sure that we could get proper septic systems on everyone. So we did go out there with a class four soil evaluator, and yeah, that's, that's the pipe that's left behind. Um, that was informal testing that was done. We did that to verify that we could get, uh, proper testing on each lot. At the next stage, we do need to also have, it'll be D E M witness, so a representative from D E M will come out and witness all of that as well. So yeah, every single lot will have a D E M witness test hole at the next stage as well. So all that, and all that information will be submitted with our next application too. So if, if you have an interest in it, it's all public record. So you, at that point, when we submit everything at the preliminary plan stage, you can go take a look at those records yourself as well.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. And my last question is just gonna be, how much of a buffer did you say? I missed that part, and I apologize, between the back of Watercrest and where the end of. I guess that cul-de-sac would go behind us.
Eric, if you could calculate that, I think it's, uh, well over a hundred feet, if not a couple of hundred feet, but, uh, from house to house and then from property line. If you could, Eric.
Uh, for the record, Eric Prevy, from where we have it depicted, um, I have it as, from house to house. Where we have, uh, depicted on lots five and six, those are the ones that are at the end of the cul-de-sac there. Uh, to your house, I see your house is, uh, directly, pretty much in line with lot six there. Um, that's about two hundred feet from house to house. Um, so then from, from the actual property line, I mean, we, we would only be, we do have a little bit of clearing that we would need to do for the septic system that goes with that house. But I would say it'd be well over a hundred feet from your house.
Okay, all right. I'm just, you know, and I agree with Rachel. I was kind of looking for the same type of buffer that the Oaks one and Oaks two both got. When they were doing their, um, you know, their lots, you know, it ju, it looks nicer when it is. You know, when it has a nice clean.
So, Kelly, we're gonna provide a landscape plan at the next hearing and.
Okay, great.
Supplement that, we will, but we'll have actual pictures and drawings of what it looks like. I, 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 you guys have me at a disadvantage because I don't know about the other development everyone's talking about, so I'm sure it sounds like it was a beautiful development.
It is, it really is.
I, I can show you my clients, you know, as we talked about before, really want to build a nice development, and we want to make sure that we are buffered. It's the neighborly thing to do, but it's also the good business thing to do.
Okay, great. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate.
Thank you for your questions, Kelly. See anybody else, Ed?
At this point, we have none. I will put it out one more time. If anyone would like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand. I will bring you in. Going once. Going twice. One last time, if you have a question, please raise your hand. Mr. Chairman, we have no one else.
Okay, thank you, Ed. I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clooney. Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Boselli?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. So the public hearing is now closed? Anybody on the board have any other questions after listening to the public hearing? I have one comment. I think the residents, um, going through what we went through with the solar project. Are realizing there'll be a lot less buffer cut and any trees cut to allow sunlight in. So that's actually a plus i- in my opinion for this development.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson?
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Uh, Mr. Sakachi, Ms. Powers, uh, just reminded me of something odd. That, that gravel pit that's back there, I mean, I'm sure people can tell me, that's still an active gravel pit. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. I don't know. I don't think it's active as far as, uh, deliveries in and out, but I will, I'll defer to my client. Because, um, Lindsay is there. Lindsay, is it an active gravel pit? Are you guys using a gravel pit?
We're, we don't, this is Lindsay McGovern, Revity for the record. We don't own that property, but J R Vernarver does, and I know he's active on site. Whether or not it's gravel, what he's doing, but he does have machines on site.
Okay, thanks. And my, just my concern was I hear blasting, blasting, blasting. I believe a gravel company blasts with their own purpose. And I didn't know if these lots, you know, 12, if it was taken into consideration, 12 and 13, and these northern lots would be just any danger zone or, you know, any found, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if it's taking consideration of the sky blast nearby. I just heard the previous comments from prior meetings that, you know, people hear blasting. And be really close to that. Just something to consider.
We can roll up on that. That's a good point.
Yeah, so, so again, this is Rick Colonian, so just maybe we just clarify this for the record. The piece of property that you were originally contemplating a purchase to the north of this, that's where the gravel operation is. It's even further north of that and that is no longer part of your property and it's no longer part of this application.
That's correct.
Thank you. And I do have one other follow-up. Maybe it's premature, maybe it's not, but there's an awful lot of open space that's going to be created with this project for both the detention basins and also as you head to the west. Is that going to be owned by the homeowners association and they will be maintaining those those areas?
I believe so. That hasn't been finalized yet, but that is the plan at the moment.
That's what we prefer.
Mr. Colonian?
Yes.
The town will not be taking that land. That will be remaining in an HOA run open space program.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Okay, seeing none here and none, I'll entertain a motion for master plan subdivision.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, I'll make a motion if you'll have it.
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
I make a motion to approve this master plan submission for an 18 lot residential subdivision project named Covington subdivision. It's a major land development residential cluster. Owner is Covington Realty LLC, applicant Revity Energy LLC. The address is Covington Road, Platte 85, lots 1 and 5.3 zoned RR2. Lot size is 45 point 20 plus or minus acres. Existing use is vacant land and he proposes to construct his 18 lot residential cluster subdivision as stated with 26 plus acres of open space. Also in my motion is the approval of the waivers from the major land development checklist. Has they are either not available at this time or do not apply the project at this time. Here, I'm going to pause this for a moment just to ask planning, if, do I need to read off those waivers or just the numbers of those waivers from the major land development project checklist?
Mr. Crossman, those waivers will come out on in the preliminary, right?
Question is, does he have to read each line or can he just refer to the numbers on the checklist and kind of paraphrase?
I think you could refer to the numbers on the checklist, Mr. Anderson.
That's what I was hoping for. So the waivers that were requested from the major land development project checklist are item numbered 27, 32, 44, 48, 49, 50, 51, 66, 74, 76, 77, 79, 82, 106 and 107. Also in this motion and we've talked about it is to deny the waiver for zero sidewalks while recommending that at least one side of the street have the proper site. And that I believe is covered in all, and I would just like to read these findings of facts really quickly. Consistency with the comprehensive plan notes that the residential clusion is consistent subdivision has means to preserve open space and protect the habitat. This proposed 18 unit cluster development is generally consistent with the Town of Coventry Comprehensive Community Plan. The proposal will not likely have significant environmental impacts. The subdivision will be reviewed by the town engineer and RIDM to ensure that the project conforms to both local estate regulations with respect to the stormwater management onsite wastewater treatment systems and the quality of snow and water leaving the site and the implementation of best management practices. The subject zoning, property is zoned RR2 and the proposed plan does meet the dimensional requirements for a residential cluster subdivision. Traffic impacts were not addressed at great length in this application, but the proposed number of lots do not indicate significant impacts. The commission later on, we may want to ask to consult further as the project develops. And I would just like to add the planning director's report into my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Colonian.
Mr. Anderson, would you consider amending your motion to include that the applicant have his engineer examine the feasibility of providing an emergency access, an emergency secondary access from Covington Road into the subdivision and also a, the potential for a permanent easement to the town in the event they want to extend the northern cul-de-sac to the property to the north.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion to state as such for the engineer to address an emergency entryway and also to create a possible easement for future development to the north side.
Okay, the original motion has been amended. Do I hear a second?
Second, Rick Colonian.
I have a second for Mr. Colonian. Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Boselli?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Colonian?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it and great to be in Coventry town.
And thank you for dropping down to the 18 lots. I think the neighbors are happy with that number. I know, I know I'm happy with that number. So thank you for being a good neighbor.
We appreciate it. We're going to get you a really good development when we come back here. Thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time today.
Hey, before I ask for adjournment, I would like to thank Mr. Boselli for his service on the board. We appreciate that because this will most likely be his last meeting.
Thank you. It was a pleasure working with you guys.
Thanks, Richard.
Thanks for your time. Mr. Flynn, just one more thing. We might want to delve back. Can I just confirm that Mr. Balkin did not come, come to the meeting tonight?
Yeah, no, he is not on. I also had John Studley reach out to him and give him a phone call. He called him on his cell. He didn't answer. He left him a message. So I'm not really sure what else we could do, Mr. Colonian. We did the best we could.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to put that on, make sure that we didn't overlook anything. Do we have to make a motion to table this to the next meeting?
I don't know if, I don't know if he'll be on the next meeting though. Will he have to reschedule?
No, that was not, that's something that is not advertised. You know, I mean, but I have no problem.
This is Dave D'Agostino? Yeah. Because it's not something that is advertised, we don't have a notice issue. I don't think that you need to take a motion to formally table this matter. I think that staff will just follow up with the applicant and see if they will be prepared to come back to the next meeting.
Fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostini. D'Agostino, I'm reading your name. Hey, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mr. Mattson, second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Lukowicz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sure there's a little post? Thank you.
Enjoy your time, Richard.
All right, thank you.
Take care. Good working with you.
I'll be seeing you soon, Richard.
Sully, thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you. Same here.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You're Richard.
I'll see you soon, Richard.
You know where to find him.
Yeah.